Are you good, ready to rock?
All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yeah.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yeah.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yeah.
Councilmember Copley?
Yeah.
Vice President Verducci?
Yeah.
President Lima?
Here.
Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, those present this evening can exit outdoors labeled "One" or "Two" in the back of council chambers to the back parking lot or front lawn of Town Hall. Meeting minutes from prior meetings, we have one set this evening, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, open session minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, did you receive any edits? Okay. There's no further discussion, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Sevening the affirmatives, there on the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to public comment on docketed items only, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and make sure the microphone is on.
Scott Guthrie, thirty-one Maplewood Drive. I'm not sure if I'm on this, but I believe that Councilman LeBlanc has a docketed item about the Charter review. And he would like to put the Charter review in place. I spoke with him last week. I have the original nineteen seventy-two charter here that I always carry with me. My parents were involved in politics before this charter was even acknowledged. My mother was elected by the voters, and we were involved in nineteen seventy. The people of Rhode Island voted to have home rule. So we do have home rule, and I'm not quite sure if it's working so well in Coventry. I don't know where to start. I don't know how many minutes you're going to give me. But I believe Councilman LeBlanc has a question to reenact a Charter review. I also have a part that's undocumented that I either should bring up now or the undocumented part, which is in, I actually was the chair of the last Charter review in two thousand and twenty-two. And we passed long our, a lot of our information to the town council. In that Charter review, we passed some stuff to be taken out. That was a violation of state law. We actually put the state law in the packets of the town council, of some of these people that sat on that town council that never saw that language. Some of it had to do with the control of the town council over schools. Schools are elected bodies, just like you're elected bodies around the town. So I'm kind of conflicted right now. I'm not sure if I should bring them both up, but in the last Charter review, we passed, and the voters passed, a question to have a comprehensive Charter review. That comprehensive Charter review was to make sure that every single state law did not conflict with every single town law that we have. I've watched our solicitor speak a couple of times on our charter and the State Supreme Court. In nineteen seventy, the voters of Rhode Island authorized local control of cities and towns. Now, three times, our solicitor got up and spoke about the Supreme Court and the Charter review. We have control of how we run this town in three different ways. So our charter is how we operate. And we follow it. If we do something wrong, we pay the price for that. And if something, if someone on the, on the town council does something wrong, they pay, they pay the price for that. So I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm going to be out of line on this, but in two thousand and twenty-two, when we presented everything, we presented everything to the previous town manager and the previous solicitor. And what we did, I'm sorry, let me take my jacket off. We included every state law that had to do with what is wrong, what is wrong with our charter. And there were four conflicts with state law. None with the Constitution, as you know, Mr. Angel said. There were problems that we tried to straighten out. We placed the state law in the packets that were handed to the council people. All right? And that night, they were never in their, in their packets. We couldn't figure out why. Why? Because the previous town manager and the previous solicitor decided that they didn't belong there. So we had to get up and explain, it's on video, if you want to go watch it. You are going to violate state law if you passed. You're going to violate the state law. And they did. So the solicitor is correct. We have problems with our charter. We have four violations. One of them has to do with school committees and town councils wanting to take control of school committees. They're an elected body, you're an elected body. That is what they're elected to do. And you've heard it before, and you'll probably hear it again. The previous, the previous solicitor loved to go to court and loved to argue in court for something that was something that he thought was right. Why? On the taxpayer dollar. I don't want to spend any more money in town arguing against a law and against the Constitution. That's not our job. Our job is to follow this. This is the nineteen seventy-two charter that was passed. I was the chair of the last Charter Commission. The last, the first thing I asked for was a nineteen seventy-two charter, and I got it. I asked for a couple of more things today, and I didn't get them, and I'm going to get them to you. And that's going to be the changes that were made in two thousand and ten. And in two thousand and ten, we violated those four things in, in that charter. Okay? I will get the minutes for you, where they brought a lawyer in from East Providence. First, let me start this way. The first question that was asked, and the first thing that was decided on by that Charter review was, if we vote on something, we will not change our vote. We will not change our vote. A certain party came in, I won't, I won't say who it was, but it rhymes with Republicans. And what they did is they turned around and they turned everything upside down. They had people come in and lie, and lied to the people that, the nine people that sat in your chair and made decisions for this town. Lied.
Scott, we're coming up on ten minutes, if you can just
All right.
do a conclusion for me.
Here we are. Am I upset about how the town is run? Yes. Are you upset about the town is run? I'm going to ask you right now. The answer's going to be yes. Why? It's because things that were changed in two thousand and ten became political. This is an apolitical document. I've asked each and every person to read it. Start there, see what the changes were made and how they affected how this town is run. Right now, we're not running very well. There is no more media, there is no more journalism, everything is on Facebook, everything is on social media. We have nothing that tells the people exactly how this town is run. One other thing I'd like to add is that there was a violation of the charter that happened last year. And in our, in our job as, as a Charter review, you know, we have to follow state law, Constitution, the whole nine yards. One of the questions that we put forward to the voters never made it to the voters. Why did it not make it to the voters? I can't answer, I can't answer that. Pretty sure it was the town solicitor and it was the town manager. Town manager was hired to come here and fire people. He fired nine union people in Coventry. That's the truth. What happened after that is that question that we asked, which was a simple question, was to send a letter to the voters at taxpayer expense to let everybody know what's going on with the town. What's it going to cost for us to run this down next year? What's it, what's it costing now? We were told, ah, it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars. So what? I didn't care about the money, nor did the nine people on my commission. They thought it was a good idea to tell the taxpayers that in order for us to run, this is what's going to happen. That question did not make it on the ballot. I'm mad about that? I'm angry about that. But the following election, that question did make it on the ballot. Also, another question made it on the ballot.
Scott, I'm sorry, but well over ten minutes. I need, I need you to wrap it up, please.
This, this, this deals with you, and I will finish.
Scott, I've given you, I've given you plenty of time. I need you to wrap it up, please.
I'll wrap it up. You, as the president of the town council, put a question on the ballot without a Charter review in place, which is in violation of fifteen twenty. That tells you how you change the charter. The council president does not have the authority to put a question on the ballot to the voters and tell them this. This is what was said in that. After the two thousand and twenty-sixth election, whoever is elected does not take their seat on January, until January fifteenth. In this charter from nineteen seventy-two, it says that you will be sworn in on the first Monday after the certification of the ballot election. You have taken, as the president of the town council, twenty days.
Mr. Guthrie, did five members of the council vote to put that on a ballot?
Does not matter.
Oh, okay.
That does not matter. What matters is how you change the charter. It's written in this booklet. I'm not going to have an argue with you, an argument. I'm going to tell you that what was done was wrong, and I'm going to tell you why.
Mr. Guthrie?
What happens?
We're approaching fifteen minutes of public comment. I've asked nicely, now this is a third time, to please bring it to a conclusion.
Bring it to a conclusion. What happens when that person that loses that election during that period does damage to this town? What happens when that person wins an election and doesn't have the chance to better this town?
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers, public comment on docketed items only, those items on our agenda this evening? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cheryl Kane. Okay. My name is Cheryl Kane, one eighty-five Reed Schoolhouse Road. The reason why I'm up here today is that I think, not positive, on the chart that is six point one for planning and zoning, it has something to do about farms and the two, yes, two, two, three, four, five acre, lots can have farms, which is wonderful. But what I want to bring to your attention then is if we do allow this, are we going to have the same problem that they're having at Faith Hill in East Greenwich? Where if someone buys a property, they're thinking they're going to have a farm, which is wonderful. But then the person next door to you has fifteen, twenty acres, and they put a cluster development there. Are we going to put anything into play where that if this person does come to the town to have their farm? Maybe are we eliminating the cluster in those areas where these people have these farms? That was my only question with that.
Actually, we have these upper hearing, so
Okay.
Solicitor's going to give a little bit of overview on some of these, and we have the
Okay.
director here, so if you want to come back up?
Sure.
If the question doesn't get answered?
Yep.
Welcome to
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, council chambers, public comment on docketed items only, those items on our agenda? Any members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in, public comment on docketed items only? Public comment going once, twice, three times, public comment on docketed items is closed. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Give the motion.
Motion by Councilwoman LeBlanc.
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Sevening the affirmatives, there on the negative, motion passes.
Members of the public and members of the council, we have one, two, three, four, five, sixteen ordinances up first, our public hearing this evening. These were originally listed at our, I believe, our last council meeting for first reading. So Mr. Solicitor, I don't know if you or want to give a preview on this?
Sure. I gave a brief overview of the process probably about a month ago, when the first twelve were proposed, and since then, there have been six more. I can tell you that tonight, there are some changes being recommended by the Planning Office with respect to ordinance number two oh two five ten, which is the actual schedule of zoning district use regulations, particularly the attached table. I'll go over those in a few minutes, but every, every other ordinance as proposed was endorsed by the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission as it should be, they should get a chance to weigh in. You do have the benefit of the Planner's Memoranda on this. And I, I don't know if, if the planner wanted to answer Ms. Kane's question, she had raised the question in open session, but other than that, you know, the council does have the right to pass the ordinances a block procedurally, following whatever questions they may have of Mr. McLean. And then if, if I could, before Mr. McLean comes up, give you the benefit of what the strike-throughs are with respect to the use table on ordinance number ten, just so that you can have that in front of you. Ordinance number ten, at the recommendation of planning, we had, you and I had discussed this recently after the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know if you want me to run through those now, Madam President, or wait until the ordinance comes up for a vote?
You can run through it now.
Okay. So the changes really are on the use table itself, is about twenty-one pages to this table. I'll run through them sequentially. So table six dash one, under residential, page one, under the accessory dwelling unit, the block labeled zero two should be deleted.
Excuse me, for members of the council, this is page ninety-eight in your packets.
Yep. So that, that would be block zero two is what the, what the Planning Office is requesting. We discussed it, and this is an illustrative example of something that was discussed before. Even if the town decided to pass this as is, the state law definitions and the regulations as they apply to accessory dwelling units would preempt local legislation. And what that means is would essentially override local legislation because it is an area of legislation and regulation that the state legislature occupies. So for that reason, Planning Office has asked that that be deleted. Your next change, you said, Madam President, we're on page ninety-eight. We're looking at, we're looking at the commercial use table under wholesale, probably about page one hundred and five. One oh eight, close. Commercial use table, wholesale, heading number two, under retail trade, building materials, hardware and farm equipment, block zero three. You'll notice that the last two edits in red were to strike the N and put in place a P, okay? The Planning Office is requesting that under L one and L two, that those N's remain as a P, and that the, I beg your pardon, that they not remain, that they not change to P, but remain as an N. So you will leave it as an N. So the change that's been proposed is annulity. Next page, under the table Retail Trade Motor Vehicles, block zero one, go all the way to the end to L two, that change should not be made, that, that N was to be changed to a P, and Planning now wants it to remain as an N. The next block, zero two, right under it, same thing, same column, the N should remain, and the proposed change of P will not be made. Next change is under, hang on. The next change that I have is miscellaneous repair services. The block that's entitled F governmental, comma, education in institutional, the numbered block zero one that speaks of government-owned building, again, last block, L two, it was proposed to change that from an N to a P, Planning would like that to remain as an N. Next page, the last change at the top of the page, block zero four, that begins private daycare, again, your last two columns, L one and L two, will remain as an N and not be changed. I reviewed those changes with the Planning Director. I have no legal obstacle to them remaining as proposed by the Planning Director. And those are the only changes that came out of the review process since the ordinances posted.
Mr. McLean, did you want to come up and just speak on this, or or maybe address Ms. Kane's question?
I'm just available for questions. I did ask Ms. Kane the nature of her question. I'm not sure, she's not sure which item it was on the agenda. I don't believe the item she's asking about is relative to any of these ordinance changes. It might be a second resolution. She was not sure which item it was. I'm, here's a resource, I don't have a presentation. I think the Solicitor's done a fine job describing those changes. If anyone has a question about any of the code, available.
We'll open it up for a public hearing. If there's any public comment or question on these ordinances, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This, again, this is just public hearing on these ordinances listed. Any members of the public on Zoom, raise your hand to be let in, public hearing on these ordinances before us. Members of the council? Vice President Verducci?
I know there's been some questions from out in the community as far as, can we just reset the table real quick, ten thousand foot view, why we're, we're bringing on so many ordinances as once, just to let everybody know why these changes?
Sure. There's an incongruity in the ordinance structure, of the town's ordinance structures with state law on a couple of different levels, but mostly driven by changes that were made to state law about two years ago now, Doug? Yeah. So, you know, this has been in the offing for a while. This is the second slate of changes, wholesale, that are being made to the town code to implement that state legislation from, seems like forever ago, but you're right, it was last summer. So we, we reacted very quickly to it as a municipality at that time. We had our, there were many municipalities that didn't have those changes ready to go in the January twenty-four timeframe. We did, due in large part to some of the resources that Doug brought on board, and we reacted very quickly to it in the Solicitor's office. Other, other municipalities are struggling with this, I can tell you, and it's, it's a mistake. Doug's ahead of that. His group had forwarded to me some proposed changes to these ordinances. We took a look at the entire ordinance, not just where they wanted to make the changes, to make sure that we were completely congruous with state law in those areas. So So, there will probably be more changes as the, as the code, as E-code, as the E-code project moves forward. And we find a variety of incongruities between state law and local law, and even internally with local law, those changes will be proposed to the council in the form of ordinances. So, and that's the reason for the wholesale change.
I can't emphasize enough that Coventry was, especially with the comp plan and these changes. We also had a huge workshop between the planning, zoning, and town council when all of this, this legislation was brought forth. God, what was that, twenty twenty-three, Dan, this point? Yeah, right, summer of twenty-three? To go through all of this, we sat for a couple hours. Any other discussion from the council on these ordinances? Last call, public hearing. Going once, twice, three times. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman the Blank.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brown, any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Members of the council, is there appetite to take the eighteen ordinances as a block? Or does anyone want to vote individually?
I think it was a block.
Solicitor Angel?
If I may, I think that's a very good idea with the exception of ordinance number twenty twenty-five ten, which had the requested amendments by planning so that we can, the council can make those and have it be crystal clear for the record. So, with respect, if the council could take the other seventeen as a block and do that one last with the changes that Mr. McLean has recommended, I think that would keep the record clear.
Okay. So, I'll seek a motion to take ordinances A through R with the exception of J as a block.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And now, entertain a motion to approve the block of ordinances.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by, was that you, Councilman the Blank? Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Zero in the affirmative, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. And so, what's the specific motion you're looking for for J, as amended?
Yes. If you'd like me to read the amendments into the record and someone can adopt that in the form of a motion, I'm happy to do that.
That'd be great.
So, with respect to ordinance number twenty twenty-five ten, specifically the attached use table, the planning director requests, and I concur, that under residential, block two, that the entire block two as it pertains to accessory dwelling units be deleted from left to right and the cell moved up. As to, as to commercial, de-commercial, one wholesale, subsection two, retail trade, building materials, hardware and farm equipment, block zero three that begins sale of paint, glass, floor covering and wallpaper, all the way to the right, columns L one and L two shall say N.
Is it I or L?
It's L. Is it L or I? Sorry, Doug. It's all, it's all about the I's, these I's. Next, under retail trade, motor vehicles, block zero one, motor vehicle, motorcycle or trailer dealers, new and used, including repairs conducted only within a building. Again, I one, I two. I one stays as P, I two is an N and will remain as an N. Block underneath that, zero two, that begins with tire, battery and accessory dealers, all the way to the right, I two remains as an N. Under miscellaneous repair services, subsection F governmental education and institutional, block zero one that begins government-owned building, all the way to the right, I two remains as an N. Same section, block number zero four, beginning private daycare, kindergarten, elementary or secondary school, all the way to the right, I one and two will both remain as an N. Did I get them all, Doug?
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten with those amendments?
Make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you to the Solicitor and Doug and everybody else who put in the work on that Herculean effort. Moving to election or appointment of town officials, we've got a few this evening. I did get a heads up, Vice President Verducci, that the person who was looking for the opening for juvenile hearing board can't make it tonight. So, we'll pass on that one tonight. We've got a couple of council appointments and a board canvassers appointment. For town council appointments, we have economic development and the school building committee. Economic development, the council seat was vacated with Councilmember Ludwig's resignation. And the school building committee, it was Councilmember Shockley, but she is no longer in office. So, just wanted to solicit interest for either of those committees this evening for appointment. What's the pleasure of the council? Councilman Pasqua?
Question on the building committee. Now that we've done the bond and gone where we have gone with that, we still?
Yes. So, that committee is now basically oversight for the, all the construction process, seeing that we meet all of the stages of each project to get the benefits and the reimbursements.
And the first, first meeting of that's going to be April seventh. We convened April seventh.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
What are you actually asking us about these appointments?
I would like to know whether the council's interested in taking these seats.
I am interested in the economic development.
All right, we have economic development. Any interest in economic development or school building committee? I need one for each. Well, we'll go, I guess we'll take economic development. Anyone else interested in economic development? Do we hear a motion to appoint Councilwoman Capaldi to Economic Development Commission?
I'm moved.
Motion by Councilman Brown?
Second.
Second by Vice President Verducci, any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And school building committee? Need somebody. Doesn't mean it's unfinished, think.
Very interested.
All right, we have Vice President Verducci interested. Anyone else interested in school building committee? Do you want your motion to appoint Vice President Verducci to the school building committee?
The motion.
Motion by Councilman the Blank?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Zero, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
We'll now move to Board of Canvassers. We have Edward Inman III on for appointment this evening. Mr. Inman, I don't know if you want to come forward and just introduce yourself.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Edward Inman. I'm a resident of Coventry, a lifelong resident. I'm sixty-four years old, and I would like to be a member of this board to work for you, but more importantly, to work for the members of this community.
Want to just talk about your background?
My background? I have a number of years' experience in the area of elections. I've served in a number of capacities. In my earliest youth, in nineteen seventy-eight, in nineteen eighty, in nineteen eighty-two, I was elected as a moderator for the town at the elections. I was eighteen, twenty, and twenty-two, somewhere in that age group. I was elected to office in nineteen eighty-six. I served in general assembly for fourteen years, and I rose to position of Deputy Speaker. I was selected by grand committee to be the Secretary of State of Rhode Island, which administers the laws for Rhode Island. And in my professional capacity, I work in the field of education. I am a adjunct professor of political science in the area of elections and state government. I teach two courses, one on the legislative process and the other on state and local governments. I do think I have some background in this area. I'm very interested in working for the municipality. And if I do get your endorsement or selection, I would do a good job, I think.
Questions?
Make a motion to appoint Ed Inman to the Board of Canvassers.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Pasqua, discussion? Councilman the Blank?
Just curious, is there a process that we're supposed to follow? I could have sworn we should have received a list from the Town Democratic Committee with a list of names. Is that an accurate statement?
So, according to Title Seventeen, Section eight dash one, "The mayor or the president of the town council shall nominate the members of the canvassing authority from lists of party voters submitted by the respective chairpersons of the city or town political committee, which lists shall contain the name of five times the number of persons to be appointed. If the legislative body refuses to approve the nomination of any person to the canvassing authority, the mayor or president shall submit to the legislative body another person named on one of the lists, and so on until a person is appointed. If the chairperson of the city or town committee of a political party entitled to an appointment fails or refuses to submit a list, the mayor or the president shall nominate any party voter of the political party entitled to the appointment."
I guess going back to my question, did we receive a list from?
Yes, a list was sent to the clerk.
And was Mr. Inman's name at the top of that list?
It was on the list, yes.
Was it at the top of the list?
It was on the list.
It was on the list, okay. This is before we, I think a motion's already been made to appoint him, but shouldn't we be asking if there's anybody else interested in this?
Nope, that follows state law. It was given a list of five names, the council president has put one forth.
Okay.
So.
Just wanted to ask, thanks.
Yep. Councilwoman Capaldi?
I haven't seen you in so long. Nice to see you again. I just have to say, I think that you're perfect for this role. My, the family is clearing out my dad's office, and I will be bringing it to you. We found an invitation from two thousand for the Secretary of State, the Secretary of State National Event that happened in two thousand here. So, I'm going to give it to you, I'll frame it for you.
Thank you. I thought you just said you had a picture when my hair was brown.
I think I do.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Very much, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Moving to report of the town manager, we have a big update tonight. Manager Perlo will be making his FY twenty-six budget address. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I accentuate PowerPoint today as some of the highlights I'm going to speak to, just to kind of give you an oversight. First, I want to thank the council and all of my directors for their support and guidance over the past two years. It is a pleasure to work with such a talented, passionate and committed group of professionals. Your leadership and dedication to do what is best for all the residents and business owners of Coventry is much appreciated. To all of our employees, thank you for what you do every day to make a difference. I have witnessed firsthand the incredibly talented employees we have that serve our residents in various capacities as our town continues to grow and evolve. At this time, I want to highlight some of the great work we are doing that not everyone sees, not everyone knows about. And that's why, is a reason to be excited about the future of Coventry. I'm a positive person by nature and try to project that to our staff every day, despite what they may hear or read in social media and elsewhere. But this is a great community. We are striving to do better, and we will do better. So, bidding with the slides, everything starts with finances. We have one of the best finance teams in any municipality who is rebuilding our financial foundation with accountability, long-term decision-making, and smart investing. They are bringing financial stability to the town with completion of the twenty-three audit, the work in progress of the twenty-four audit, and the reinstatement of our bond rating for Moody's this month with no reduction. We have funding a deficit reduction plan, increasing our local appropriation to the schools, and making our annual required contributions to the town's pensions. We are working productively and proactively with the superintendent and his finance team to address opportunities to save, reconcile old accounts, work on a deficit reduction plan, and move ahead with the twenty-five million dollar school bond projects. We are engaged with our service function departments, DPW, engineering, building inspections and planning, to invest in our infrastructure when it comes to paving roads, rebuilding sidewalks, re-engineering dams, assessing our sewer structure and capacity, and re-establishing our sanitation division's resources. We are also investing in our police department with additional vehicles and equipment utilizing grant funding and providing our officers continuous training. The cornerstone of the future of Coventry is going to be the Community Learning Center. It has been, construction has begun, and it will provide education, workforce development, and health monitoring for years to come at no expense to the taxpayers. We are adding additional personnel in this budget to key departments, including a new superintendent, operator, driver, and mechanic in DPW, a deputy finance director whose duties will also include purchasing and grant management, a new clerk in the tax assessor's office, along with a new clerk in the registrar's office. We are adding a housing planner to the Enrile and Mississippi's Fellowship Program who will help the department over the next seventeen months at no cost to the town. We have acquired Flat River Reservoir, and will be adding public space in the near future. We are finishing up the solar array project on the old Arnold landfill, constructing a new sewer line for the high school, and a new playground at McCottah Boulevard. We are reinvesting in Bryant Point Beach and Tyog Lake and expanding our programming at both the Coventry Senior Center and our Parks and Recreation Department. These are the highlights of the budget that you guys got a couple of weeks ago. So, we're proposing a two-point-six-nine increase to the general property tax line from eighty-one million, five hundred thirteen thousand, three twenty-six to eighty-three million, seven hundred eight thousand, one twenty-five. The tax rate itself has not been established, we're still continuing to work on that to grab the gap, to gather additional information with new construction and property improvements. We'll have that to you shortly. We are proposing a four-point-eight-nine percent increase to the municipal budget from one-twenty-one, two-thirteen, six-one-nine to one-twenty-seven, one-three-five, zero-six-eight. Our state aid this year was increased by nine-point-one-five percent for a total of seven hundred and four thousand, nine fifty-four. A majority of that is due to the distressed communities relief fund, which Chief Coleman will be here in two weeks to explain how that process works. I tried to look through it, but I couldn't explain, understand it, so. Chief Coleman will be here to explain that to you. Also, our state aid for education was increased by seven-point-five-one percent for a total of two million, thirty-nine thousand. Also, our state aid for education was increased by 7.51% for a total of $2,039,706. We are proposing a capital improvement budget of a little over $400,000, with Kevin benefiting mostly from that, because he strong-armed me, and Scott's getting a little bit also for a new vehicle and recreation. We are proposing appropriating the balance of our opera funds that have been committed to department directors through MOUs in the following manner. These are some of the highlights. We have $700,000 for the new Lake Tyo Gatehouse, $450,000 for the redevelopment agency, $200,000 to go towards our high school sewer pumping bill. Cody's getting $108,000 for software upgrade, and Scott has two big paving projects, with paving Payne parking lot, and also Bryant Point as part of the whole reconstruction of that, of that area. Our proposal for the school department is the same as it was during our joint meeting in December when we reviewed it over the five-year plan. Our local aid, our maintenance of effort, is what they requested at $1,235,622. In addition, we appropriated in a separate line item, which is not part of maintenance of effort, to fulfill what we've been discussing with the Order of the General regarding the deficit reduction plan, and we'll be funding that in the amount of $472,000. This brings the town's investment into the schools at $1,707,622. With the additional $900,000 in savings, the school is realizing with the approval of the recent RFP for healthcare, along with the reserve funds they have presently that will be made available. The school department is in a much better place when it comes to planning to address their deficit than they were a year ago. The town will continue to support all of its departments as we head into a difficult financial times with the end of opera funding, opera funding, along with the unknown of how we're going to be, how we're going to fare with the changes in Washington, but we must continue to meet the needs, we must, but we must continue to budget needs versus wants, and continue to make our taxpayers the priority. The only change to what was given to you guys two weeks ago was we added about $52,000. We had a change in the town manager's healthcare fund. We had a change in canvassing. We added $7,000 for the special referendum, and we had a change in healthcare. We got our amounts from the trust, and they went up a couple percentage points more, so we added about $32,000 there. So, the total change is about $54,000 from what you guys saw about two weeks ago. That's what I have. I can answer any questions. Like I said, not a lot of changes from what you guys already have in your packet, and we'll be working to finalize that tax rate as information comes forward. Any questions?
Questions, discussion from the council?
I have a question. When will a resolution or a letter certifying the plan for the deficit reduction plan be put in front of the council and school committee? Because I think we, both bodies need to vote on that and make that official.
I think it's been decided by both parties that we're waiting for the '24 audit to finalize that number. I think that's the last conversation we had. Obviously, we're funding it.
I was going to say, we're fun, we're.
Funding it, but there's no.
We need to fund it, but.
We can, we can put something forward.
I think we should.
Okay.
If we're agreeing to fund it, that's essentially us agreeing to a plan, so.
So, according to the school department, they're still at that 5.8. So, if we agree that is the number, we can definitely put something together for the school committee and the council and the Order of the General.
I don't know where the council, the rest of the council stands on that, but I think something needs to be in writing before this budget season concludes.
We can have it next meeting. Sure.
Vice President Verducci.
So, if the '24 audit yields a change to that number, we'd have to revisit deficit reduction plan, do we know? Or is it just this time and place?
I think we would have to address it as a whole, but I think this council's committed to giving, what we've committed, anything additional would come from the school side, in my opinion. If it's $6 million or $6.2, I think at this point, we've committed to our 2.5, but obviously, that's a council decision. So, I think that adjustment would have to be on their side if that came in at a higher number.
It's a rough timeframe for the '24 audit?
Beginning of May. Right when the budget's going to be passed by the council.
Councilwoman Capaldi.
I think we need that, that plan before end of this budget season, definitely. We've been waiting for this so long, and we need to see that.
Like I said, the number hasn't changed. I know it was, when we met with the Order General and his whole team, the crux of the conversation was, what is the number? Because like you said, it went from 3 to 3.5 to 4.2 to 5.2, and now we're at 5.8. They were pretty steady, they're pretty consistent that 5.8's it, if they're running like they tell, like they tell us they are. They're $140,000 over budget, which is the number they're supposed to be, because we gave them $140,000 last year. So, they should finish plus $140,000 this year at the minimum. As long as they do that, then that deficit stays at 5.8, and the funding mechanism in place kind of takes care of it. Like I said, with them saving that $900,000 in healthcare, plus the reserve they're going to get from their current provider, that shit alone will almost take care of their half of the deficit.
Vice President Verducci.
So, does it make sense to get this plan? I mean, if I'm remembering right from the deficit reduction plan outline, we still need to list the items we did to get there anyway, I believe, right? You know, to bridge the gap for the 5.8?
I'll refer to the solicitor on that one. I'm not sure how that would work.
Just because I'm thinking if we're going to do that exercise anyway, we just leave it there, and then if nothing changes, we submit, and if not, at least we're 90% there, or something like that.
Well, our goal basically is, for our part, basically, it's just funding that for the next five years, that $472,000. That'll make up our 2.5 million.
Yeah, I, I think procedurally, and I've spoken on this before, there needs to be a corrective action document. It doesn't have to be verbose and lengthy, but how did, how did, how did the two groups, the council and the school committee, get to where they are? Or the, or the school department and the town get to where they are? To the $5.8 million number, which then commits the town to fund its share and delineates how the schools, schools would fund their share. And quite frankly, to the manager's point, if they find that there's additional monies that add to that deficit, they eat it. They can't come back to the council, and that puts it in writing. It's enforceable, and it should satisfy the State Division of Municipal Finance and the Audit General with respect to that requirement.
Manager Perlo, if you want to remind the public of some upcoming dates, like April 8th, what that vote is, and then the, the public hearings? Is the mic on?
April 8th, council passes a provisional budget. The public hearing dates are 26th and the 2nd, or 6th, I believe? I don't have them in front of me. But it's, I think it's April 26th or 24th, the Tuesday, and then it's that Saturday for the two public hearings, and then that Tuesday is the first vote to approve the budget.
I think it's like the 28th of April or something like that.
I believe so. So, April 29th, hearing, May 3rd, Saturday, hearing, and then that Tuesday, we try to approve the budget.
Any further discussion on the proposed, the manager's proposal? And did we, we settle on a date for Finance Committee to go through those notes, those questions?
Deciding on either the first or the second. I think you guys said it works for all of you, so.
Okay.
Waiting to hear back. Analyze that, and we'll have that. I know there's six or seven questions that were outstanding from the budget hearings. We have some of those answers. I have, we just talked to the league to get answers on a couple of those. I have not heard back from the league yet.
Okay.
But the other ones, we're getting ready to provide the information.
Any further discussion? All right. Manager Perlo, if you want to move to items B and C on your report.
So, regarding the Highway Superintendent, we have conducted our interviews. We are ready to make an offer to a candidate. We've asked the council if they could have the solicitor come up with a personnel contract for that party. It's just some different stipulations than our regular contracts, which were not a contract, but he's going to be non-union. So, we just want to work with the solicitor to create that contract, and hopefully have the precedent in place by May 1st.
So, you need ratification, authorization?
It's the council to authorize this solicitor.
To vote? No? Any objection from council members drafting that? All right.
And lastly, I had a meeting March 18th with the school department, Don Cowherd, Russ Hill, Chief Pastore from the Ryland Fire Marshal's Office, there Amanda Cashon, legal counsel for the school regarding the whole fire suppression system. So, like they mentioned when they came, it was headed towards adjudication. They wanted to go forward with these 30-day intervals for getting these sprinklers updated. So, the Fire Marshal Department, the Fire Office, and the Chief Pastore are kind of pivoting, going in a different direction. We're actually going to work on a consent agreement to get the process going and get a timeframe in place, and kind of give us some flexibility, as opposed to going back to them every 30 days for an approval. We're going to try to get a consent agreement in order that Mr. Angel, Ms. Cashon, and the Ryland Fire Marshal's Office agree upon, which basically gives the town approximately 16 to 18 months in order to get this completed. With that said, they would like to start the process with the engineering and design, which is the contract that's in front of you from Studio Jade for that $300,000. That's kind of the first step in showing some good faith that the town wants to get this accomplished and get this on the radar, push it forward. So, I'm asking if the council would ratify that first bulk of money for $300,000 so they can at least start the process when it comes to the engineering and design for the fire suppression system.
Sorry, I blanked. Where is this coming, the money coming from?
Actually, the school bond.
Okay, so they're aware this money is not coming till a bond is taken, okay. Any questions for Vice President Verducci?
Just a quick question. Are we, during the time of the decree, are we going to need fire watch, or is there any other additional expenditures we might need?
They're still working out the details of the consent agreement, but I don't believe so. I think they're going to give us the amount of time we need for the engineering, design, and construction. They're talking now about the finish date of September to October of '26. So, they think it's, it's going to be hopefully manageable for us.
Yeah, that, that was a question that I had discussed with Ms. Cashon. When the Fire Board changed tact on this, it had to do with financial implications, because initially, the school department attorney, Johnny Anderson, was concerned that there would have to be a fire watch in that part of the building, and that is not on the table presently. If it is, or it's a non-starter for Fire Marshal's Office, if it's not in the agreement, then we'll be back to the council.
Any additional, Councilman Pasqua?
So, just for clarification, they are, they're, they're willing to wait for payment until we get the bond? Are they charging us interest or anything, or any upfront costs?
I think Studio Jade knows our situation. They've been working with us for the last two or three years. They understand the bond is coming. I don't foresee there's going to be any billing from them until we have the bond.
Okay.
It has, and from one of my conversations with the superintendent and Russ Hill, I don't think they need money tomorrow to start the process. I think they're going to start the process with the approval of the Fire Marshal's Office to get this thing going. Because again, I didn't, I didn't think it was going to take this long, but that's what they're saying, because they have to work second shift to install it. So, they're saying it's going to take until September or October of '26 to have this whole thing complete.
Okay.
Additional questions or discussion? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to ratify the contract for Studio Jade for the engineering and design of the fire suppression system at Coventry High School?
I'll make it.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Vice President Verducci. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Yes.
Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Thank you. Moving now to report of other town officers and officials. Maria Broadbent, Assistant Town Manager, has one item this evening.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Maria Broadbent, Assistant Town Manager. Here, I shared with you my notes, just to talk about maybe some recommendations to sort of breathe some life back into the Economic Development Commission. The commission, I don't think it's been formed all that long ago, and I started working with the commission. At the time, Councilmember Ludwig was the council member's appointed person. The chairman of the commission moved on to something else. The commission is set up for nine members, with five being the quorum. And unfortunately, it was really difficult to ever get a quorum for that commission. A lot of times, we would, there was even one member that I would call all the time and never get a response, so I only had five people without him, so I'd have people show up and never have a quorum, because I never knew whether he's coming or not. It was, it was maddening. So, I'm giving you, I guess I'm being too honest, and I won't tell you who it was. I'm giving you a couple of suggestions, and my recommendations is, and one is to keep the nine members, but maybe look at, and then the other issue was, one of the members, turns out, probably doesn't live in town. You know, business owner in town, but doesn't, didn't live in town. So, one of my suggestions is, you keep the, the nine members, but allow a provision for at least a couple of members that might be business owners here in town, even though they don't live here, because they're still invested in the economic development in one way or another. It wouldn't be a bad idea to have someone that represents the farm community. And I, I put that out there as somebody that's done a lot of work with farm folks and certifying organic farms and, and that sort of thing, and they're sort of the other half of town, and, and there may be someone that comes forward that has an interest in that sort of thing. Maybe reducing the quorum size, so that even if I only have so many people show up, we can still meet. And then, it, it has a monthly meeting requirement, and honestly, there wasn't a lot that was really coming out of that committee to merit a big change from one month to the other. So, having it meet every other month might actually be just as productive. And then, now that we have a, a council member liaison to the committee, I would recommend looking at the membership. Right now, there's six people on it. Actually, five people on it, three of whom terms have expired, and the other two expire in, in middle of April. So, you have opportunity to reseat that board, and once that is done, I would love to see, and I've talked to a couple of folks actually at the league conference the other day, somebody who's really, what they do for a living is economic development, to come in and do a facilitation and, and include you, or whomever you want included from the council, to really look at what the charge of that commission is. You know, on, on the back of my notes, you'll see all kinds of interesting notes that I got from the internet. Economic development is whatever it is that you decide it is. It's, it's everything and nothing at the same time. It's whatever you, as a group, think, hey, this would be the best thing to improve everybody's status in town. And having some specific things that you would like to see that commission focus on might help to motivate the members. You know, at this point, we were looking at banners, which we're not allowed to do. We were looking at a gift card, which was kind of cool, but hard to get out there. There's, we have a list of businesses, but I could keep an intern busy for six months trying to contact them and get their contact information, and, and we need to decide for what. You know, we've, we've set up a way to communicate with folks that want to hear from us about economic, economic development issues. So, that's why I throw it out to you, you know, what, what do you want to do? What do you want to see done with this group?
Councilwoman Capaldi.
Hey there. Um. When I started poking around when I first came here, I was very interested in this. I heard that they haven't met in like a year. Not much activity, and I think even when they were together, there was, it seemed to be. to be kind of all over the place. This is just gossip. I don't know if that's true.
It wasn't super productive.
Okay, so you need, you don't need to name names, but I'm assuming the chair needs to be kind of a little bit more organized and have a strategy to move forward?
When it came down to it, towards the end, they decided that no one, there was no one there that wanted to be the chair, so they decided they were going to have a different chair every meeting, but the next meeting, you know, when it was like, who's going to be the chair, no one wanted to do it. So, yeah, having a good productive chair would be helpful.
So how is the chair selected? Is it a vote among the commission?
That is defined, I think it's amongst themselves, yeah.
And why nine? Why nine people on the commission? If it was so hard getting a quorum, why nine people?
I don't know. I wasn't here, and I think I may have just started or after this was formed. I don't know why nine.
And as the councilwoman liaison, what is my role in this?
I think you get to define it.
That's a French word.
I think you get to define what your role is.
Okay. I have so much to say about this. It's not the Capaldi Show, so I'd like to talk to you about it later.
Range time to meet. Councilmember Pasqua?
A while ago, I was a part of the EDC, and I think it's great to revive it and sort of just kind of reseat some interested people. I could tell you, just maybe it'd help you, one of the difficulties that I found when I was part of the EDC was really just a little bit of lack of direction. At the time, that town manager we had sitting in, I had brought an idea of bringing huge community events and increased tourism, which would boost businesses and, you know, get people to Coventry, and other people had totally different ideas, and it just kind of all fell apart right there, because there's really no direction by the then-town manager. So, you know, now that we have an RDA, there's probably some conversations that they can have together, because the RDA is, you know, that's kind of part of their job. So, you know, that might be a good collaboration to have. But, yeah, I think we should all try and get the word out there that there's openings for this and get people involved.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put something together to solicit membership. You know, maybe after we talk, we can talk about what that looks like. You can do anything you want.
Anything else? Vice President Verducci?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you saying the bit about the farmers. We've been hearing a lot from the farmer community recently, so I think you, you know, just based on some of the things I've seen, you may have some good people out there who want to get involved this way. But one of the things I'm also wondering about, you know, economic development as a line item in the budget, it looks like it's just a stipend. So, you know, we've got to find a way to kind of leverage something we can do to actually, you know, promote those items, and perhaps it's within these other budgets, Parks and Rec, maybe, you know, kind of leveraging those other things so RDA makes sense, things like that. We've got to find a way to, you know, get a hook in there without actually taxing the community we want. So maybe, you know, you're having an event, but maybe we're waiving fees or doing some other things to actually, you know, be that catalyst to launch into that. But this is very exciting. I appreciate the research. This is, I'm really looking forward to our liaison running with this.
We shall have croissants, yes. But I think, if I may, to Vice President's comments, a lot of departments do things that are of interest to the community, and they're doing them already. And, you know, and we've talked about how to promote different things, so sometimes it's not a matter of creating a new thing, it's expanding on something we're already doing. You know, the 250th celebration is going to be a lot of fun, and that's a chance to have some, you know, local, cool, historic twist on things that we're already planning to do. So, you know, I don't know that we have a deep enough bench to create a whole bunch of brand-new things sometimes, because we just don't have the people. But being able to capitalize on the things that we already do, there is some money in that budget, and I'd love to be able to use it to pay for a facilitator.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Just a point of clarity, EDC doesn't get a stipend. I think that was just, because it's about a stipend.
It's a budget.
Yeah.
It's a budget, it's not, no members get paid.
Just in case somebody wants to apply, and they're like, hey, it was my 45 bucks a week.
No, no, no.
It's no money.
No.
Yeah, okay.
It's a budget, but, yeah.
So my, I do agree with the changes around allowing Coventry business owners to be on this, instead of it being just nine Coventry residents. I don't know where others stand on that, but I feel like that's a decision we should make before we go and advertise these, if we're looking to recruit business owners to be on this, not necessarily residents. So I don't know what the council feels about that, but I think that's a decision that we need to act, maybe provide some feedback on that recommendation specifically before we advertise. Councilmember Capaldi?
I think I brought it up to you a few months ago. I wanted to bring a chamber back here that was actually in Coventry. I know years ago, there was a chamber. I'm talking about when Sandy Bottom had that peninsula, and there was an old white house on it. You guys may remember that. That was a chamber. That was when I was a kid. I know that we're a part of a chamber that is somewhere in Warwick, and I don't think any of our business owners partake or do anything with that. I think this should have business people on the commission, because they understand what business is, and in all different sectors of business, to try to bring more economy here.
Maybe if you limit, you know, you have a certain number of slots for business owners that aren't residents?
You can have a mix, definitely.
I do not believe we are a member of...
The Central Rowan.
Yeah.
And I thought you were.
They are more than willing to help promote our activities and even promote ribbon cuttings for new businesses and things like that, but we're not actually a member.
But we're not a part of the chamber.
We're not a, we're not a member, remember? Maybe we use our budget for that.
So my recommendation might be that the two of you meet and kind of come up with, put something in front of the council with what changes you, I don't know if this is a committee that was, a commission that was established by ordinance or resolution, but I think it would be appropriate to bring forward revisions you might find appropriate for us to then consider.
Chapter 15, so we'll bring back changes, recommended changes.
Just to solicit, I know there was a concern with the land trust members not being residents of Coventry. Would that be the same thing for economic development? I'd have to look at it as I sit here.
That wasn't, I don't think that was a resident thing, that was town employees being on a committee. That wasn't a resident issue, if I remember correctly.
It's probably okay if we define it. Because this defines them as being town residents.
Got it.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion for the Assistant Town Manager on this item? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the solicitor's report. There's two items this evening.
Keep it brief. So Johnson's Pond, dam number 167. As advertised and as expected, you will have a full pond this summer. The dam operations permit has been finalized. It was finalized in a way that, in my opinion, benefits the town, and will maximize the opportunity to have that at full pond this summer. I want to thank Councilman Pasqua for his participation in the latest meeting that we had with David Chapi. The oral history and other historical insights that he provided to me as we brought this thing home were invaluable. But you will have a full pond this summer, and the dam operations permit has been finalized. I know that we're about three inches below spillway presently. That's because we have an inspection tomorrow by our engineers. For those who have an interest in this, we've been putting water over the spillway for quite some time now, so we'll see just what shape we're in. I don't expect there to be any changes based on the engineering. On dam number 176, you received a presentation from Fuss and O'Neill Engineering with respect to the condition of that dam, the project timeline and budgets and so forth, at a recent town council meeting. As part of that, we indicated to you that we had a March 31st deadline for submission to RIDAM relative to compliance with an outstanding consent order in that matter. We will be meeting the March 31 submission deadline on that. However, we're out of money on the planning, and you have no money for construction. You heard what the construction cost is. There are other projects in town of a similar nature that will require attention, and, you know, I, with respect to that, in particular, well, with respect to this project in particular, you're going to have to consider a general obligation bond to fund the repairs to this dam. You will have no choice but to do that. As efforts do continue with the manager and the grant writer to obtain funding, those efforts have gone from somewhat likely to quite doubtful, given the conditions in Washington, and we have got to make progress on this, not simply to keep DEM happy, but it is a matter of health, safety and welfare with respect to the stabilization of things in the interim that the town spend money to stabilize that dam failure. To do so could lead to a failure of that dam, which feeds directly into Johnson's Pond. So we've talked about that. So your next focus on this really needs to be funding, so I just, you know, throw it out there, and that's my report. Clear questions?
Questions on the solicitor's report, comments? Councilmember Pasqua?
Thank you, Solicitor Angel. Yeah, we had a great discussion with DEM, and just for those listening, the notable part of that is the reservoir is slated to be full from April 1 to November 1. And we will, we have a greater authority over the outflows in the hot months, and we have a definition of when to use an alternative calculation to be able to make sure that we keep that reservoir full all summer long, as well as feed the river. So there's a lot of good work, and I'm extremely happy with the way that turned out. So that's going to be beneficial for the town, residents and ecosystem.
Any other comments, discussion? Maria, are you staying for this resolution? Okay.
So this is the last of, excuse me, the many project priority list requests that I gave you from last week. Did I grab the wrong? Just before we had brought those before you a couple of weeks ago, the manager and I and the planning director, we're talking about some options to look at long-term impacts environmentally of some of the development. There's a lot of development pressure going on in the Lake Tyog watershed, and what this would do would be to create some sort of planning recommendations done by professional consultants to look at natural resources inventories and things within a watershed that need to be protected, such as steep slopes, watersheds and their buffers, making sure that we're planning for storms and sea level rise, and whether we're taking into account where our base flood elevations should be 20, 30 years from now. So what this does is just puts the opportunity to seek grant funding for a plan that looks at those sorts of things on the project priority list. It doesn't actually fund it, it just makes it available for grants from the Infrastructure Bank and others.
Questions for the Assistant Town Manager on the resolution? Do you want your motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember LeBlanc. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmatives, you're on the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving now to Councilmember Communications, Councilmember LeBlanc.
Thank you. I have put together some information that I want to share with the council, so give me one second. However, you open up your binder, the first document is a copy of an email that I had asked that this be placed in a section on the agenda where votes actually could be taken, but that was denied. Let me just talk about the first item on Councilmember Communications, which is the charter. Based off of the March 11 meeting, there was comments stated by the solicitor that we can't hang our hat on the charter. There's Supreme Court rulings, there's state law that has been passed that makes some of our charter null and void. So with that statement, plus my conversation with a former Charter Review Commission Chair, we thought it would be best if we could at least try to get this council to see if there's anybody interested in participating in the Charter Review Commission, and maybe some of those items where the Supreme Court rulings and/or state law have made some of our charter language null and void, we can update that. So we actually can hang our hat on the charter. So that was number one. Now going to item number two on Councilmember Communications, it's about an amendment to the solicitor's contract. If you go to your first tab, first page, I just want to explain why I think the amendment is necessary, and all of these documents support that, at least in my opinion. Section 3.04, forfeiture of office, I'm going to emphasize, it says a council member shall forfeit office if the member, and then number two, violates any express provision of this charter. If you go to page two of six in that first tab, section 3.08 talks about the presiding officer. It says, the second paragraph, it says, "The town council shall be recognized as head of the town government for all ceremonial purposes and by the Rhode Island Governor for purposes of military law, but shall have no administrative duties." And at our last town council meeting, I brought up section 10.14E, which is actually on the back pocket of our binder. 10.14 talks about the duties of our town treasurer, and I've highlighted paragraph E, which states, "The treasurer shall pre-audit all bills and invoices, payrolls and other evidence of claims or charges against the town and see that the budget appropriations are not exceeded." So I just want to make sure that we're following that section and making sure that no council member has any administrative duties. If you go to page three of six in the first tab, section 3.11 talks about a quorum. It says that four members make up a quorum. I want to emphasize that no action of the town council shall be valid or binding unless adopted by the affirmative vote of four or more members. Moving on to tab two, which is, talks about section eight of our charter. It talks about the only place in our charter, it talks about a supermajority relates to our budget. It doesn't state that we need a supermajority to do anything else in our charter other than approve our budget, so I wanted to call that out. Tab three is the current solicitor contract, and if you go to page three of seven, I highlighted where it talks about the termination of the agreement. It states, "Our services and representation of you may be terminated before the end of the term upon a supermajority vote," but our charter doesn't state that one is necessary. And then if you go to page six of seven, I've highlighted where we talk about the review process of Angel Law LLC's invoices. It says Angel Law, it says "we," but it means Angel Law, "will provide both redacted and unredacted billings, invoices, time specifications and cost specifications to the council president via email for review and approval." Then it states, "It is the president's responsibility to provide approved, redacted invoices to the finance director." So my issue is 10.14 states that our finance director should be able to pre-audit all -- all bills and invoices. There's no nuances there. It doesn't say except for the solicitor's invoices. And then tab four, I just made a very simple draft amendment and all it states is amendment to the Angel Law LLC engagement letter. "If any parts of this contract violate Coventry's town charter, that language of the contract shall become, becomes null and void." In my opinion, the charter is extremely important. That's one reason why. When I first started in 2020, I received this book. Part of this book is the charter. I've read it. That's why I am very passionate about this topic. And I think this entire council should also be very passionate about this. And I wish we could vote on this amendment to the contract tonight. But that is everything I have.
Discussion from the council? Councilman Copley?
I echo Councilman LeBlanc's message right there. I had some stuff written too. So I had the opportunity to review the page six of the contract and the rest of the engagement letter provided by Attorney Angel. It says, unless I'm mistaken, the second paragraph under the payments responsibilities for payments states, "All invoices, time specifications, and schedule of cost expenses should be handed in accord with the attorney-client privilege to remain confidential." A question though, it's never been answered, is, "As in every member of the town council, correctly the client, not just the town council president or vice president." Clearly states that. But in the contract, it just says, "We're going to provide both redacted and unredacted billing invoices, the time specifics, and cost specifics to the council president for review and approval." Again, I have not got the legislation or the Supreme Court rules that says, just please refer me to the legal authorization that would allow the town council president to have this particular administrative duty when it's forbidden by the Coventry Home Rule Charter, Article 3, Section 3.08, Presiding Officer. President Lima, did you know that you were violating the town charter by doing that? The quorum part, the majority is, the majority of the persons elected as a member of any town council shall have the quorum. And majority of members present at an illegal meeting and be determined by any matters legally before them. That goes to Rhode Island General Law 455-3, which is a majority required for action. So it appears that the super majority to terminate the appointment of the town solicitor is not required and it's obvious that Attorney Angel put this language in the contract knowing beforehand that it was not enforceable. The town council cannot breach an illegal contract, which this is. Thank you.
Discussion from members of the council? All right. We'll now move to public comment for undocketed items. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Greenlight. Hello, my name is Cheryl Kane, 185 Reed School House Road. I'm here tonight to ask, not only on behalf of me, but on a lot of Coventry residents that are uncomfortable to come before you or to call and contact their council people with illegal customary home occupations. We have them throughout Coventry and they are making us lose our identity here. We have a documentation right here that explains the customary home occupation and it states right here that it's only supposed to be secondary to your property's principal residence. My neighbors live at this 211 Reed School House Road and they do have an illegal customary home occupation. And it's their residence and it's their business. I have, from the state of Rhode Island, right here, a limited liability company and it's on behalf of Crown Cleaners. And his address is 211 Reed School House Road, Coventry. It says mailing address of liability, limited liability company and name or title of contact person. It has Kyle Cludia, 211 Reed School House Road. He also, he's also his own resident agent at 211 Reed School House Road. So he does have a file and annual report right here. We also have that, he is bringing back all dead debris, plastics, tree trunks. He cuts trees also down. His backyard is full of like four feet of dead leaves because of his business. He has all heavy equipment and he's driving over the back of his property, which is now complete mud. And then he has now put four feet of leaves, dry leaves over that, which really concerns because now he's driving his dump truck over that and with the hot muffler, I'm afraid he's going to catch it on fire. There's a lot of trees in this area, there's a lot of woods in this area. Where his property is, a lot of the trees have been cut down just because the prior owner, he is dumping everything in his backyard. I have a drone and you can see all the stuff that is on my property in the surrounding area. My concern is also that we have a lot of brick and mortar establishments in the town of Coventry that pay taxes. These illegal customary home occupations don't pay taxes to our, to our town. I know that Public Works has been having a lot of problem with their street sweeping because there's vehicles on the roads. Not only are there vehicles, there's trailers for landscapers, there's, they're all different kind of equipment that they have. I understand that people have to have businesses, but you need to rent another business area. You can't have it in a residential area. My father had his own business in Coventry from the 70s to the 90s. We had to rent a brick and mortar establishment. We couldn't have it at our house on 26 Marist Street. So he did have to go out and he had to do that. We, this is a residential area. We should not have to keep on coming back here. I've been coming back here for like two and a half years now. We have all the documentation, even when it comes to his ground, right here, we have an ordinance, peace and good order of the Code of Ordinance. It's a property maintenance. It tells you all about, like you have to have grass on your property. You can't be more than 12 inches high. It has everything. I have every law that comes that is in the state of town of Coventry. We have a trade name that we give to employees and that we give to, when I used to work here in the town clerk's office, we would give this trade name certificate to the applicant. And on it, it gives you the guidelines for customary home occupation. It tells you that you can't see anything to do with your business from your property line. I have a backhoe that I see all the time. I see dump truck. I see everything, everything is there. It's just, it's, it's a business. It looks like a junkyard, salvage yard. He brings plastic, metal, soda machines. You have all the documentation. I have so many videos, pictures in all this documentation. Please, it's not just on our road. It's through Oakhaven Platte, Walker Ridge, Walker Farm, Oakhaven, just, it's everywhere. So please, please clean up our town. We all moved to Coventry for a quality of life and, and our safety. And we're not doing this. We're not abiding by our own laws. Please talk to the zoning enforcer, planning department, make them do their job. We have voted you into play because we want you to be on behalf of us, to work for us. So please, please help the town of Coventry to be beautiful again and to get our identity back. Thank you.
Manager Pearl, I saw you scribbling over there. I assume you'll follow up. Anyone else, public comment? Want to come forward? If I could, Mr. Guthrie, just someone else who hasn't spoken yet.
Hi, how are you? My name is Brittany Boyer. I live at 318 Town Farm Road. I own Sweet Liberty Farm. We focus primarily on community givebacks. We're working towards being a nonprofit. We are not yet. We bring in no profit, everything that comes into our farm, we give back. Just super briefly, we've done a few hundred packed backpacks for local schools, two years of free Halloween costumes for kids, five years of Christmases for families. And we try to do monthly food baskets with, we raise our own poultry. So we raise chickens, we raise turkeys. We try to give food baskets back. We have like a, I don't know what you would call it. It's like a no questions asked kind of thing. If you need something, then message us. If we can do it for you, we do our absolute best to. We have a small area in the front where it's, take what you need, pay what you can, eggs, veggies, whatever we can do, we try to do. We moved here about three years ago and we're really excited to kind of build what we have in the community. I didn't expect to speak about the Economic Development Commission because I didn't really know what that entitled, but hearing about that, that's really exciting. Councilman Verducci, you have been listening to us group of farmers scream and riot about all these things we want to do and that we want to bring to the community. So I appreciate you. Just briefly, again, bringing something to the community. I understand that public access to Johnson's Pond is a hot topic. I understand there's a lot that's involved in that, that a lot of people don't know. They just yell all these crazy things and they want it done yesterday and that's impossible. Like I get that. Myself and a few other local farmers reached out to the town to see if we could get a list of public access points. Nobody knew what those public access points were. Nobody knew what they were, where they were, or how to find them. I actually found a list that Councilman Pasqua posted on a Facebook post and I went out with my husband to see if I could just see what those places looked like. I've lived here three years. I've never experienced anything on Johnson's Pond. It's very, a very special place. My husband, his dad was with him when he was a child, a lot on the pond. He passed away on the pond in a boating accident. So we want to do as much as we can to bring that asset of Coventry to everyone. So we went on the GIS mapping site, which I know is not super accurate, but we kind of located those areas, Councilman Pasqua, that you had posted. And when we went out to check them out, a lot of homeowners were not super nice about us checking them out. They told us they were going to call the police. They were in cohorts with the town. They're actually purchasing it, eminent domain from them. They mow the grass, like that kind of stuff. Some were blocked off by fences, some by rope, some by chains, vehicles, RVs, boats. And when they said they were going to call the police, we just left. We didn't want any problems. We just wanted to see what these areas were. So from the farm, what our giveback, what we would like to do is if we could get a quote from some of our vendors for signs that show it's a public access point and we paid for that and we made that donation to the town, that's something that I would like to bring up. Everybody would be able to utilize it. Everybody would know where it is. There would be no questions asked. Homeowners couldn't threaten to let their dogs out of the house because they didn't want you there. During the litigation period, everybody rallied as a community how much of an asset the pond was and everybody wanted everyone to help save it. Many people didn't care. Do what you have to do, save it. It's a huge asset. But the mindset has changed now. And anytime you speak about the pond, unfortunately, the answer is, if you want to enjoy it, buy a house on it. And that's not fair. We bought our house three years ago and my mortgage has increased almost $500 from taxes in three years. Though I feel like if we are, you know, there and we want to support you and we want to keep that, let everyone share it, let everyone use it. And I just want to know what I have to bring to you guys to make those signs possible.
So I would say, please, I appreciate that you want to chip in in the donation, the community spirit, but that should be part of the redevelopment plan. And I don't want to get too far down this road because it's not a docketed thing, but I want to say I appreciate the enthusiasm and the spirit and you going out to those sites. And clearly that needs to be part of the RDA's work when they're developing the public access plan that we need to go to the existing public access and make sure that that's established. But Councilman Pasqua had his hand up.
Thank you for bringing this up. I appreciate it. So, you know, it's kind of a tightrope because everything the town owns doesn't mean it's accessible to everybody. So some of the lots are not set up to be public access. They may not be safe. They may be a situation where you have quicksand or mud or something. So part of this whole process, which we are working through, is making sure that, you know, what is really actually legitimate, safe, and good public access. It would be kind of a, you know, I don't want to step on legals area here, but it'd be probably in my opinion, a little bit of a risk if we stuck a sign on a tree and said, "This is public access" and somebody sunk in mud or something happened. So there's a little bit of a process, as you, as you've figured out, to be able to make these things safe and identify it properly, make sure we have the right parking so emergency vehicles can get in and out of those areas. Because a lot of these areas, and if you've been to them, you realize there's not a lot of room. And a fire truck and an ambulance take up a ton of room.
Right. My husband's a first responder.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Exactly. So I, okay, yeah. So we're working really hard to get something quick for you guys, but we're, we're going there. So just hang in.
Did I hear a sign up for the EDC here?
Yeah.
All right.
Awesome. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment, undocketed items? Come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Over again. Dr. 31 Maplewood Drive. Just so I can add a little bit to the young lady that spoke to me. I had, I was fortunate to speak with the Speaker of the House the other night. We talked about this and he told me how we have to go about it and I'll share that with you at another time. What I'm here for now is, Councilman LeBlanc brought up some stuff about the charter. That big giant book is the charter and every single ordinance in it. The Charter Commission is charged with changing the charter. And every single ordinance in that charter can be changed. As the chair, I found out one night that the, on my agenda, which was changed without my authorization, the council president showed up and told me what I could not and could do as the charter chairperson.
You're referring to Ann Dixon?
I am referring to her.
Okay. Just want to make that clear.
Yes. I wouldn't blame you for that. So I explained to her that, that she was not invited here. I don't know who put it on the agenda. I found out from the attorney that I hired on my own. So I did, I did not have to use the town attorney. I'm a little bit smarter than some people. So as she was telling me what I could and couldn't do, I explained to her that I could change every single thing in that book as long as I had those nine people to help me. But I would have to get it past, you know, the town council. So I mentioned earlier that a charter question was put on the ballot without any charter review revision, which is 1520 in the charter. So if you want to change something, you have to have a Charter Commission in place. One of the greatest things that happened under my charter review was something that was done by Bob Brennan. And he wrote something that passed. And you want to know what? Never made it to the voters. And I'm going to read it to you. There were two of them that year that didn't make it to the voters. One of them was to say, hey, let's send out a letter. Let's spend a little bit of money and every six months, we'll send a letter to every taxpayer in this town to tell them where we are, where we're going, how can we help you? We need your help. Never made it on the ballot. The following election, all right, that mistake was corrected. And I think I said earlier, another ballot question was put on there. And that ballot was put on there without a Charter Commission in place, which is a violation of the charter. I mentioned it earlier. So I want to tell you about Bob Brennan's amendment to the charter. That did not get on the ballot in 2022. Now, I remember the solicitor saying that we changed the charter to say that the council will pick the, you know, the solicitor for the town. What we originally wanted was we wanted to have the counselor to be an employee of the town. You work for the town and you work for the town only. The last guy we had, we spent millions on. The guy we have, but now we will spend millions on. Trust me. Going to happen. So the language that was supposed to be on the 2022 ballot says this. So the language that was supposed to be on the 2022 ballot says this. The town council commencing in 2023 and no later than every 25 years thereafter, shall appoint a special comprehensive charter review commission upon passage of a ballot question, creating said commission by the electors of the town of Coventry. It passed. The purpose of a special comprehensive charter review commission is to ensure that the town charter is aligned with national and local best practices and consistent with existing state and town laws and/or ordinance and to reduce potential town liability exposure. This is written by a man on my committee. Goes on. In addition, the special commission will be given to simplifying and streamlining the charter for efficient government within the town of Coventry and to reduce potential town liability exposure. The town council shall appoint nine members to a special comprehensive charter review commission to extensively review the charter. Special charter review commission. You can still set up your five-year commission that was authorized in 1970. Remember, I mentioned earlier, the 1972 charter commission that I follow and believe in. I believe in that one because everything else was changed politically. And I think I said that earlier. All right. So beginning the day the town council appoints said commission members by resolution, no member of said committee shall be an elected or an appointed official of the town nor hold a managerial position in any department, office, or agency of the town. It gives it to the taxpayers. Do you remember the, do you remember the days when Nick Goran brought up the separation of powers? Where he said, no legislature or anybody that's resident in the legislature should never serve on any board or commission or this or that. They had that before I got there. And I thought it was a pretty good idea to have them, at least one person there, so you could say, huh, bad idea over here. However, let me go on. Nor hold a managerial position in any department, office, agency of the town. In addition, an advisory member shall be appointed from the school committee to assist the appointed charter commission. Remember, the school committee is an elected board. The special comprehensive charter commission shall make periodic updates to the town council regarding progress of the commission. In, in essence, they're your adjunct. They can help you, not hurt you. But they can also keep you in line with how you want the town to go and how the voters want to, you know, the town to go. Throughout the comprehensive review, elected input shall be sought using public covenant meetings, workshops, and townwide polling, as well as any other methods that may provide information and data to the special comprehensive charter commission members who are going to be appointed by you. I'd like to see more than nine, but the constitution says nine. So does the state law. The special comprehensive charter review commission shall provide a final report to the town council no longer than two years after appointment, but no sooner than 12 months after appointment. Any extension regarding the final reporting requirement may be considered and approved by the town council. May be considered or approved by the town council. I brought to you earlier that, that we presented things to the town council and we put state laws in the packets of town council members that were ripped out by the former town manager who's fired.
Scott, you already brought up this point, new points.
Yes. I'll keep, I'll keep.
We're coming up on 10 minutes again.
Great. Are you going to cut me off? I've got the rest of the night to you.
Please, Scott, we don't have to speak to each other like this.
And I understand.
I'm just asking for new points you bring up, the same ones as you were up here before.
I like to make my point clear because there are new members on this council that have not heard this before.
Sure. And you're, and if you'd like to send it to the clerk, she can send it to the town council and we can get this docketed up.
Great. Following the presentation to the town council, at least one period, one public hearing shall be held to present to the proposed revisions to the town electorate and copies made available prior to the next election. The adoption of the revised charter shall be in the form of a simple approve, disapprove position. Yes or no? The special comprehensive charter commission shall have an appointed legal counsel of their choice. I chose my own. I did not trust the last person that was here. And I'm pretty sure that the people that took over the council didn't either because you fired them. Okay. The sections of any amendments in addition to this charter shall be numbered by the town clerk and inserted in their appropriate places and added to the charter. It shall not be necessary for the full text of the charter or the amendments to be printed upon the ballot. Any digest or description thereof or any question or statement which substantially expresses the purposes or identifies the subject matter to be voted upon shall be sufficient, which is simple language that we put in all of them, provided that any proposed charter change must be drafted and approved prior to the placement on the ballot by the town council and available. This is earlier language. So this goes back to 2020. The 2022 ballot question that, that the charter commission submitted to the town council, they voted yes on, did not show up on the ballot. All right. Are we, are we going to get this on the ballot this year? What the voters asked you to do. It's a mandate. It's a mandate. We're asking for a charter review commission to be put in.
Okay. You've made your request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, any members of the public on Zoom, would like to raise their hand? Public comment on undocketed items? Public comment going once, twice, three times. Public comment is now closed. And at this time, I, we need to continue executive session to April 8th. Can I have a motion to continue that item to April 8th?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Capaldi, second by Councilman LeBlanc. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmatives, you're on the negative, motion passes.
And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 7:58 PM.
Make motion.
Motion by Councilman LeBlanc?
A second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. The chair votes aye, we stand adjourned.